All righty. Well, it being six o'clock on the nose, let's get this show rolling. Uh, da-da-da-da, let's see. It's not been late, would you care to read the quote?
If your shift doesn't come in, swim out to meet it. Jonathan Winters.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to open the podium for any non-agenda items. Seeing nobody running up to the podium, let's move along to the administrators' report.
Well, that's me. A couple of friendly reminders for everyone. Second half property taxes are due April 1st. Don't be late, we charge interest. Nomination papers are available here at the town office during normal business hours for the positions of, on the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, and Budget Committee. Need to be returned by early April. Date escapes me at the moment. Harbor fees are due by Friday. Don't be late, or you'll may lose your privilege, or pay additional fee. For the board's knowledge, the roads have been posted by the road commissioner. We are in or rapidly approaching mud season. Bear with us, we're doing the best we can to keep roads passable. Pier deck, the material, or some of the materials were delivered last Friday. I would anticipate, they did not start today, but I would anticipate at some point this week that project will commence in earnest. Route 1 project in Camden, although it's in Camden, it's going to likely impact folks from Lincolnville. They had a bid open, MDOT had a bid opening for that, only received one bid. I think they're evaluating that bid, I think it might have been a little bit higher than they'd hoped or anticipated. But if they do decide to award that project, the completion date is September 2021, so you'll see activity this summer and probably next, should that project be awarded. And the last thing I have is a big thank you to the ballot clerks and folks here in the office that helped with absentee ballots. Last Tuesday, we ended up with a forty-eight percent, or just over forty-eight percent turnout, which was greater than those in the know estimating, but seemed to power through it without too much difficulty. And again, thank you to everybody that pitched in to make that a success. That's it, unless you have some questions on that.
Any questions for David? Fantastic, let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the town office, unless announced otherwise, the planning board meets Wednesday, March 11th, 7:00 p.m. Broadband committee is meeting Thursday, March 12th, 7:00 p.m. And the Board of Selectmen meet next on Monday, March 23rd, 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Any upcoming community events anyone care to share? Seeing nothing there. Let's move along to the meeting minutes from the 24th of February.
I move that the board approve the February 24th, 2020 meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have committee chair and department head updates, we have the harbor master up first. Not seeing the harbor master here, let's move along to the fire chiefs.
Well, Dave said, well, Don forward to the fire chief. AJ, we, deputy chief. They said you would like me here to discuss truck maintenance and the truck maintenance budget as well.
Yeah, I think, I watched last week's meeting and I gather that there were just some additional, deeper insight desired from the maintenance, and if I understand correctly, wondering if it's enough? Was that the sentiment?
Yeah. And I, Donnie, I know you, I think I was the one that requested that and had that question, because I know you have problems with one of them.
Right. Which that's gotten, that's not resolved, but we're far closer. It's been diagnosed, so they're just scheduling a time to actually fix it, which is a chafing, chafed wire somewhere in the arms, in the chassis arm. So, where there is an end in sight for that at least, but like you said, it's not much of a cost. And I, I think in my head, maintenance-wise in the budget, I kind of hope like eventually, because we haven't been maintaining trucks, like I think in my head, I feel like we'll finally catch up, and it won't be as much as it always is, but the reality is, is it's not, it's consistently being pretty close to the same, plus you figure inflation and minimum wage and everything else, it's, every other year, it seems to be a big bill and a reasonable bill, and it'll be a big bill and a reasonable bill. So I, I'm not opposed to increasing it so that we have the funds available.
Do you have a sense of what you would feel comfortable as a cushion? I hate to use that term.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard, you know, because it's maintenance and it's repair as well, you know, maintenance you can usually schedule a bill for it, but repairs are so, so unseen. You know, it seems like everything's been around fourteen to seventeen thousand dollars. I think this year it was just above seventeen thousand, but they actually reduced it for us, because we have all our trucks there, to a little over fourteen thousand. So if it was at sixteen thousand, it would give us a cushion per se. I don't know how you feel about it, or what AJ's opinion is as well, because he talks more in depth with them about the repairs.
Pretty much the same. I, I scheduled the repairs, so they communicate with me when there's problems and that sort of things, and there, there's almost always a little problem with every truck, even when it goes in for regular scheduled maintenance. They're kind of a complex piece of equipment, and there's, there's a lot of valves and things that can go wrong, and the good thing about having this company do it every year is that they are checking all that stuff regularly, making sure there's no leaking valves, none of that stuff. So it kind of takes some of that liability off us, because they are checking it every year and making sure everything's working good, and pump testing, and so in that sense, it's good, but there is always some little add-ons to make the truck a hundred percent, but you pretty much want them a hundred percent for them.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, what, what Donnie said, a little cushion may not hurt, even though that's not the most desirable term, but just to prepare for those little added costs that you can't really plan for.
Yeah, well, and here's the thing, from my perspective is that, so not to use the word cushion, but it's not as though you're building in elements to your budget that you don't need, and I would hate to see other, either safety or life improvement things suffer because of necessary maintenance, you know, so. Okay? Any other questions for these gentlemen?
I have a question about the wages. So my understanding is firefighters get fifteen dollars per call, right? It's not hourly?
Twelve, well, minimum wage, whatever minimum wage is.
Oh, sorry, twelve. Minimum wage, just, just, but per call.
Yeah, yeah, per call.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the chiefs? Thank you very much for coming in and clarifying that for us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening. And the harbor master is here, so does, as he wasn't available to present the budget to ourselves and the budget committee, he's here tonight to answer any questions, if anyone have any questions for the harbor master on the budget, or do you have any comments you wish to share with the board?
I wasn't, excuse me, obviously I wasn't here, I was plowing snow that particular day. I don't know, David and I went over the budget, kind of, I mean, he's, he's the number guy, I get the ideas and put it to, put it to, put it to paper, and I don't have an actual copy right here in my hand at the moment, but if I can't answer any questions, I'm sure my help will do. Ken.
I got nothing.
No. David, do you have anything? Mr. Kenny David, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm well-bursted in it.
Yeah, no, I think, I feel like we're headed in a good direction.
Yep, I think we're in pretty good shape, we've got new floats coming, another one on the way in a year or so, and that getting put on the pier, as we, well, not as we speak, but materials down there. Said he's going to start today or tomorrow, so looking good. No damage, no damage, knock on wood, get this one up.
Well, that's the question, not that it has to do with the budget, but while we have you here, I was just wondering how are things looking in terms of...
Everything's, everything's in, I mean, everything's stayed together, we've had a lot of wind, a lot, a lot, a lot of wind.
That last blow was...
Yeah, but it was favorable for us, it was more the nor, but we've had some pretty windy, pretty windy weather.
Yeah.
Everything's fine, right now, it can change.
I've got a quick question about the winch and the electricity that, that goes to it. There is a report by the main department of, I forget which department, that, that looked at the tent sites around the midcoast, and just talking about sea, sea level rise, and has, has the winch ever, has the ocean ever risen high enough to potentially damage the winch or the electrical components?
Not yet, not yet. I mean, we've had water onto the pier, but it's under a box, and it's, you know, it's a, it's fairly high elevation, but yes, it, with the right situation, yes, it could get wet. Usually if we have a bad situation like that, I'll kill the power on the pier, but that's only happened once.
Okay.
But it's, you know, it's, the water has been up to the level of the, of the pier before, and I expect it will probably do it again, so. You know, you get, depends on the wind, I mean, the winds are wrong direction, then it's, things could potentially get wet. If, a lot of the wind, I mean, it has to be just, it'd have to be east-southeast to really, make it really bad. Usually it backs to the southeast on the worst part of the wind quadrant, or it's around to the north side, which it was the other day, but that's, I don't have my crystal ball.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, super, thanks Mike.
Okay.
Thank you, Billy.
Let's move along to selectmen updates. Josh, do you have anything for us?
Yes, we had our first broadband committee meeting, we had almost everyone there, very productive. David was very helpful in bringing everyone up to speed on, on just the history of, of, I guess, how we got there, and we're having our next meeting on Thursday, and we are moving briskly.
Fantastic. Kern, is that anything for us?
Well, the only thing that I've got, which David probably has the same thing, is the midcoast solid waste manager attended his resignation, and we, we bid him farewell, and now we're looking for a new manager for the day-to-day operations down there. We're taking applications now, and I believe that's until the 14th.
That's until this, this Friday.
Yeah.
Which is 14.
And, and after that, we will interview, the personnel committee will interview, as far as our, the, the two groups that I am a part of for midcoast solid waste, we've had a meeting each, but we were pretty consumed with that, so we didn't make any progress on the other things that we had on the agenda, but moving forward, we're moving swiftly, and I feel we will have someone competent at the helm down there in very short order.
Fantastic, thank you. I have nothing to report, meetings have been rescheduled, so we'll see in the future.
Yeah, well, the only thing I have to add to what Kern had to say, which was pretty much complete, was that we have had some applicants that have applied, I am on the personnel committee, I'm chair, and the, we will be talking to these people next week. It is our game plan, if that fits the people we got to talk to, but so we have had some people interested in it.
Great, interest is good.
Yep.
All right, thank you all very much. And next up, we have a liquor license renewal application for McLaughlin's Lobster Shack. We do have the applicant here and available for any questions, if anyone has any. If not, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by McLaughlin's Lobster Shack.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And can we sign that now, so that we can take the stamp and send him on his way? Sure.
Save us.
I'm gonna say for a little bit more, maybe not.
Sure, absolutely. We can, we can do it while we're in the mode.
Yeah, make that come back to me, because I have to fill out something, I think, if you don't mind.
Okay. And we also have a representative here from Cellar Door Winery for the second liquor license renewal application, anyone have any questions for that application? If we don't, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by the Cellar Door Winery.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you both for coming in, and we will sign those, if you wanted to hang around just a little bit, and David will give it to you in a second, so we can save the postage.
Awesome, thank you.
We're not that scary, sometimes. And let's move along to an update from the E team.
I signed it wrong, was I...
I think that'll be all right, nobody in the state looks at it.
Okay, are you, are you Julie?
We won't poll.
I screwed you up.
Hello, everyone, Jim Dunham Tank with Road. Did you all have a chance to read this?
Yes.
That was sent to you? Okay, so I won't read everything, but I just wanted you to highlight a couple of the things here, and then we'll talk about some things that we, we have questions for you. First of all, we did do our public information meeting, and wanted you to know that, that, you know, that was a great opportunity, we had fifty people show up, and it was an opportunity for people to ask questions, and, you know, we tried to provide as many answers as possible, and it was a good turnout. It was an indicator for us that there's, there's an interest in the, the school and the potential for getting solar power to power the electricity for the school, so that was encouraging, it was great, there was a, someone from the select board at the meeting, so that was nice to see, and then also a couple of people from the school committee showed up, and so it was really important for them to be able to air their concerns, ask some questions. So, we're, I guess what it meant for the E team is that it was an opportunity for us to reset. Right now, we're, we've decided that, you know, that, you know, the school committee is not interested in pursuing that initial solar farm, and so we're, we're resetting a bit, and we're exploring other options, and could be that solar farm still rises to the top, but we're looking at some other options to see what we can do. Certainly one could be solar panels right out there that we could be looking at, you know, in, in a year. That, that's one of the town properties that we had looked at before, so that, that's a possibility. The other possibility is, you know, there could be other companies that are offering solar farms, we could be looking at a PPA potentially, similar to what we got going at the fire station. So, we're trying to get as much information as we can, and kind of broadening our scope there. The other thing that came out of that, it was that, it was suggested that maybe a school committee member could participate in some of our E team meetings, and we thought that was a great opportunity for, to keep the conversation going, so they're aware of some of the things that we're working on, and, and to be participating in that, so we'll see. Right now, no one has stepped forward, and we're not, you know, it isn't a requirement, but we're hoping that maybe someone will, we'll see, we'll keep you posted on that. Yeah, other than that, I think that, you know, we spelled out some of the other things that we're doing for goals. Not only are we interested in this solar for the school, but we're also looking at ways that our community can maybe conserve more energy. If you don't know, and I think it may have pointed out here, is that the fire station array is actually producing more power than we're actually consuming in our community, municipal buildings. That's, that's great, but if you remember the PPA, we're paying for all the power that it's producing. So it means that, in this case, that power is not being utilized in our community, and it's just going into the CMP bank, if you will. And so, yeah, we're, we have to pay for all those, that system generates, but we're not able to utilize it all within our community. So we're saving some energy, and I think it's because there have been some LED lighting that's been incorporated, and that helps to save. We haven't really fine-combed it, I don't think, where else we're, you know, we're saving this energy. But one of the things that came out of our discussions after the PAM was to decide whether or not we couldn't think of ways that we could utilize electricity more, and not, you know, not use the non-renewable resources. And a couple of the things that surfaced was like the beach fire station, it's currently, it's got an oil furnace there, and if, if I remember correctly, I think it's using about five hundred gallons of oil a year, and, you know, we thought, well, there's a potential that we could, you know, put a heat pump in, and that would use electricity, and, and so that's something that we're, we're looking at, and then we thought, well, that maybe there's some other opportunities with municipal buildings where we could utilize electric heat versus other non-renewable sources of heat. So, at this point, I think what, you know, our E team wants to do is to get some permission from you all that we could begin to at least do, it would be an informal energy audit of our buildings in town, and, you know, so essentially allow us to go to the town office and get the key or the password to get into some of these buildings to do that. We did this energy audit before we, you know, when we did the town array originally, and we just, you know, we learned a lot about it, but specifically the fire, the beach fire station would be something we'd like to get in and kind of look and see whether or not even doing some tightening up, maybe there's leaky windows or doors or something like that, that would improve that, but then to also get an estimate from a local electrician of what it would cost to actually put a heat pump in, and then bring that information to you all for approval. I think a rough estimate, you know, we're just off the top of our heads, not really digging down too deeply, was that, you know, we could be looking at a payback period of three to four years by the unit, and then beyond that time, there wouldn't be any charge for electricity, I mean, for, yeah, for powering that building. So that's just some of the information that we're starting to gather now, but it was brought to our attention that, you know, really need to bring it in front of you, since we're not a town committee, to get that authorization from you all to be able to, to do this audit. So that's one thing. I don't know how you want to address this, if you want to take them one at a time lately, or if you want to wait until I mention all the other things, and then you just have your discussion?
Um, I think we could actually pause here.
Okay.
Um, and what I first want to say is that the efforts that you all have made for the town, we're so lucky to have a group of individuals who have the energy and the wherewithal to tackle projects like that. And so before we continue, I'm grateful that you pointed out that you are in fact, this group, the E team, is a citizens group and not a municipal effort at all. And so, reading through your proposals, and I want to make it very, very, very clear that I think it's fantastic, however, I find ourselves moving rapidly to a sticky point where, uh, your worthy projects are, to have a, a non-municipal effort tackle a lot of these, I start to feel uncomfortable, and I would caution the select board against authorizing any of these as a private group. I mean, essentially, not to, not to, but I guess what I'm trying to say is that, you know, you're effectively a bunch of private citizens looking to do some fairly significant municipal infrastructure changes or amendments. So I think they're all really great proposals, and I think we should consider them, however, I think before that, we should take a half step backwards, and if you're interested, I hope you're interested, because I think the wisest course of action for, for all of these efforts to come to fruition is to create an ad hoc committee, and fold in some of these proposals as the goals for the ad hoc committee, and hopefully the individuals involved in the E team would be willing to serve on the ad hoc committee. That way, we can proceed, um, under an umbrella that, that has both very clear directives and is operating within the auspices of the municipality. So those are my initial thoughts. All of that aside, yes, let's talk about it. So I don't, I don't mean to stop you in your tracks, however, I just feel that that is an important consideration for the board to take down your advisement. So, you know, take it for what you will, but I don't know if that's anything that the board wishes to pursue?
I, I feel we should pursue that. If the interest is within the E team to participate on the, on an ad hoc committee, I feel that we all would benefit, number one, the town would benefit from that, the committee would be bound by state statutes, and also by the town charter, so we're all, we're all working in the same guidelines. I really feel we should. I would like to hear what, what he has to say on these.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I think we should table it and then work to create the ad hoc committee.
Well, and when you say table it, you mean, take them under consideration?
Correct.
In terms of folding them into the goals of the committee?
Table it might have been the wrong word, but...
But, but I mean not, you know, not necessarily take, take action on them tonight, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So all of that, yeah, did you have something?
Basically what Kern was saying, I think that it's, I think the E team has grown to the point that they need to be a town, a town-run entity to, in order to be protected under our statutes, our rules and regulations and all that stuff, because otherwise, I'm afraid, you guys could end yourself up in hot water, which, not saying you can't get in hot water with, being on a committee, but at least that way...
As long as it's renewable energy.
At least that, that way you get to drag us, we're...
Using to heat the water, you mean? [laughing]
I mean, I've got nothing but good things to say about, you know, what you've done and how, how you, how you've done everything, but you're getting more to a point where I think you're moving in steps further than citizens can be allowed to do stuff in the town, without an official banner to be under, in my opinion.
And who are we ad-hawking for? Is it a committee of town, or directly underneath the select board, or what?
Underneath the select board.
Yeah, I mean, that's what all, you know, so ad hoc committees serve at the pleasure of, the directive of the select board, and so it would be, I think, a collaboration clearly of what your goal... And so, it would be, I think, a collaboration clearly of what your goals are, and if the select board has any additional insights in terms of boxes to tick off in terms of efforts towards sustainable and renewable energy. Which, that being said, it doesn't preclude you from, from the E-Team, from pursuing anything as a group of private citizens, but in order to make these efforts as impactful and clear for the municipality, it strikes me as the wisest path to get some of these things done, for sure. Both in terms of budgeting, I mean, there's a number of, and we'll let you get into your, your forward proposals, but there are a number of elements in here that would have impact on next year's budget, for example. And so, planning those out.
Right. Yeah, and that's part of the reason why we're here tonight, because one of the items is something that, that we were thinking that it could potentially be on this year's budgets. Others, you know, we've, we're not in any rush to do these things, but we want to keep things moving along. We've got three new members actually now from, that have joined the E-Team, and so, you know, there's some enthusiasm, but we don't really want to do it all that you see here, or maybe take one project at a time.
Okay.
So, do you need, you, you said that ad hoc thing happens later, so nothing gets decided tonight?
I would, me sitting in this position, I would counsel the select board against taking any action on any of these items tonight, but then I would turn, with the consent of the board, turn to David and say, on our next agenda, and we would work together, and I would think, consult with you, to create a draft charge. And when I say you, I mean the E-Team.
The E-Team.
To create a draft charge for the ad hoc committee, and we can call it whatever we want, but coming up with those priorities to start working on.
Okay.
And then that essentially would give the committee the ability to take action on those items without constantly having to come back to us for approval.
Okay. So we'll just sit on our hands for a couple of weeks until the next board meeting, not do anything? That's what you're suggesting, because we're?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying that, is, in terms of the board giving authorization, not necessarily anything contained within here, but I'm not suggesting, I mean, you can do whatever you want, it's private citizens.
Well, I mean, one of the things, and it may be on here, it's just that, if, you know, getting information, we don't like to keep coming into the office, you know, and ask Kayla for some, you know, some financial information or whatever, or to constantly bother David with things like this. Is that gonna, that would change under ad hoc?
Well, how about this? How about you work through the rest of your list, let's talk about what the first priority is, and then, you know, and then we'll go from there, so.
Well, I think our, the beach fire station, it might be, you know, that, that one is something that we are looking at, but we haven't been in the building, and, and, you know, we wanted to look it over and be able to make a much more comprehensive look, but we also want to be able to get an estimate. And I don't know how that works, and you have to guide us on that, as far as, you know, if it's under a certain amount of money, can we just go and get a local electrician to come in and say, it's going to cost this much with this space to put in a heat pump?
And see, that's where being an ad hoc committee would come in your favor, is that as private citizens, you can't do that.
We're not supposed to be doing that.
No.
Okay. Very good. And so, then, in fact, yes, we have to wait two weeks, and so then the follow-up question for that is, okay, what about the budget? You know, if, if this is something we'd really like to see ASAP, potentially, because there's electricity we're producing not being used, and is it something that this board would be interested in seeing, have to switch out and get rid of the old oil furnace there, and switch to renewable resource? Is it too late to think?
Very much so.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I mean, it, no is not the correct answer, it'd be, there's, the board could decide to adopt something completely different in the budget, however, we're doing the final review tonight. So ideally.
Yeah. So it's next year's project?
Months ago, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. It's spring, and we've got plenty of other projects to keep us going.
Yep.
All right, well, why don't we just table all this right now?
Sorry to take the wind out of your sails.
No, 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 that's all right. Not a big deal. We've learned, we were an ad hoc once before with the streetlights, so.
Yeah.
And I guess we lost that privilege. Anything else, team?
Well, you, you accomplished, the thing with ad hocks is that when you accomplish your goals, you can either renew the goals, add new goals, or you've done what you set out to do, so.
Okay.
You satisfied your duties.
We did that one.
Yes.
Okay, well, very good. I think that's that for now.
So Jim, I want, I want to put a thought into your group's head with regards to the beach fire station in particular. When considering that particular piece of property, short-term, it might make sense, however, and it, it's hard to say there's no, there are no plans whatsoever, however, once the new fire station is constructed, we may not, who knows what the town may choose to do with that facility, so considering that potent, theoretical and potential, potential transfer of lease in the future, is there another option of, you know, of, of energy use that we know is going to sit, put for the life of?
Right.
A grant loan, PPA, what have you?
Okay.
That kind of thing. So. Hang on. Any question, any more questions for Jim while he's standing there? Okay.
I do have one question. I hope you don't feel like this is a shock.
Oh, no. No, that's right.
It's just that your information definitely shows us that there's a lot more involved here.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and we just want to do it right.
Yep.
And we want you to do things right.
We just, we just.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. I always use, I'll stick my nose in where it doesn't blow. Has anybody talked about it, about the shit? It's, I mean, it's our building, but, okay, okay. I, I don't like to step on anybody's toes. As long as, as long as, as they're all on the side, I mean, I'm sure they would be in time, but I want to make sure they know about it before we get too deep in it.
Yeah, we, we wanted just to gather, you know, information so we knew what the proposal is, we may get down there and say, it's not worth it, you know, it's not a building that's worth it.
No one likes to be blindsided.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we wouldn't do that, we want to make sure everyone's in, in the loop.
The chief, the chief is aware, I don't know how far.
That's the main, that's the main.
But it's not a completely new concept.
No.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah.
All right.
And we have, one of our members has a question.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Thank you, Jim.
John Williams. To your question, your last question, we have thought about that, and we thought, you put a heat pump in the old fire station, and then you build a new one, you move the heat pump into the new one.
Yeah.
And, and even if it's not part of a grand HVAC scheme for the new building, any heat you pump into any building will relieve the load on any other systems that you have in there, and it's only a good supplement, and it will use the spare electricity that right now is just not going to waste at all, but we're not benefiting from it, although we pay, so I think we have a good answer for that, yeah.
John, do you know how much energy we're producing in excess of what we're using?
Yes. Dave did that, and it came to about 6,000 kilowatt-hours, right? And that was, the total is 59,000. Yeah, so it's 10% overage. And we got, I mean, I went on the internet and found, in Nova Scotia, somebody did a, how much, how much, how big of a heat pump you would need, and so I scaled it, just multiplied by scalers and things. And we'll see when we can get a real estimate, but there's a heat pump the size we would need, and it would use about, in Nova, in this Nova Scotia thing, about 3,500 of the 6,000. And maybe it'll go a little more, but we're right in the ballpark to use a lot of it, most of it. So it looks like a good fit.
Great.
Okay. Fantastic.
Yeah, I like the idea for ad hoc committee, by the way.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So David, I guess we'll turn, there seems to be consensus among the board members present for pursuing this concept. Can you, we work on creating a?
I'm certain I can have all sorts of assistance between now and March 23rd to have a draft back to you by then.
Fantastic.
That would be great.
All right, thank you very much. Anything more on this particular agenda item?
Thank you, E-Team.
And again, thank you very much for keeping the conversation alive. Yeah. Yes? Okay. Let's move along to a continuing discussion regarding the LIA. Do you want to give a little preamble, David, since I did miss the last meeting?
Sure.
I watched the conversation, but.
Well, certainly at the last meeting, the folks from the Lincolnville Historical Society and the LIA representatives were here, and they made a request that the board contemplate waiting at, at least a year to take any action with regards to repair, replace, sale, seeking voter authorization, continue on the way we're going. We then thought that perhaps something could be done partway to reduce the costs of the overall project. You had the board, there were only, well, there's only four of you, shouldn't say only four, there are four of you here tonight, there were three here. The last meeting, you did ask, two meetings ago, for some articles to help you formulate what, if anything, you wanted to put forward. You have those a little more filled out now than you did last, last meeting. So I don't know, I'll just answer some questions, I guess, if you have some.
Does anyone have specific questions for David or for any of the occupants of the LIA who are present?
David, you had, you had mentioned in the newsletter that, that you recommended we not just kick the can down the road for a year?
Yeah, I, a couple of thoughts. I think I articulated these in the newsletter. We had, we, the town, has, owns that building, we have an ownership responsibility to that building as owners, or as you as the overseers of that building. We have some issues beyond structural that are obviously not going to heal themselves, that shouldn't, my, my mind be ignored longer, roof being one. We have some water issues on the, I guess I would say that, call that the west side of the building, in terms of water and rot, which isn't getting any better, those were pointed out to us by our tenant a couple of years ago, when we talked about maybe doing some, just some siding and some paint, and the board chose to go down the avenue of looking for the overall health and picture of the building. I don't know what the year gains us in, except time, in terms of, nothing's going to get better, I don't believe. Costs continue to rise annually, I think, you know, you read about it in the paper all the time, whether it be the sewer district had some challenges with their bids, talked about it a little earlier with DOT on Route One, the Camden Project exceeded the engineer's estimate. Inflation and construction costs don't seem to be going down.
Well, import duties have precipitously affected the cost of construction overnight in some cases.
Yeah, so, plus, we have the known issues of structural deficiencies there that I think we're looking right now, even if a project were to be approved, we're funding for a project in June of this year, which is, we're seeming to be aiming towards in terms of vote, we're really not looking at doing any type of work until this time next year, because we'll have to do design of it, bidding of it, the likelihood of doing, you can do construction in the winter, but when you do construction in the winter, the costs go up. And so, there's a number of issues overlapping each other. Not the least of which is the life safety concerns.
Any other questions for David? Diane, do Diane wishes to?
Yeah, are you, go ahead. Are you here as LIA or as?
As the. Or?
As the what?
The Historical Society, or both, actually, because we're all in one building. I guess that, well, first of all, this, this all hit us in October, I think, whenever that report came out, isn't a whole lot of time for us to react. I know Bob's board isn't in town, and so there aren't a whole lot of people to consult, we're kind of adrift, feeling like we have to try to protect our building. I, I would, I'm arguing for putting it off, or at least not putting it to a vote in June. I think we know, if you put it to a vote with a $650,000 price tag, I think we all know how the vote's going to come out. If you look at, when you read the report, there are, well, I, I see four issues, roof, second floor, foundation, and that wall. There's a lot of other things in that assessment that I've really questioned that we need, but yet the price, it puts the price up. I think if we have time, if we could have more time to look at it, our groups could, would, are willing to do some footwork to, to find some, get some bids, or get, get some contractors to come in, how much is it going to cost to put the roof on? How much, who can, who can fix this foundation? You know, lifting the building and putting a four-foot basement under it essentially, which is, I think, what that, that plan called for, seems a little excessive, and there are plenty of people in this area who know how to fix foundations under old buildings, and they know how to fix second floors. I, I live in a house that had a second floor supported. There are lots of ways that that can be done, and I think this is a good, that the assessment is, is good in that it shows us what's wrong. There's no question that that's, that's helpful, and that work is done, and the town paid a lot of money for that, that, to get that assessment. So, I just, I think that to, to jump ahead to what probably we all know wasn't going to be a successful vote in terms of the building, if there's, it, it gives us a chance for, for townspeople to see what it is they might be losing, in losing this historic building. You know, the town has owned it forever, and when they closed the school in 1947, as far as I know, they never did another thing. I don't believe the town put a penny in that building until five years ago, maybe, or at any rate, certainly none of these structural things were ever addressed. Building was basically let to, to sit there, and anything that's been done in it was done by, by volunteers, the people that used the building. And they, they did a good job of keeping paint on it, and fixing things, and furnaces and all that, but it, it's come to the point where, first of all, we can't, we can't do it. You all offered it to us, and at one point, that was your first reaction, was, we'll, we'll sell it to you.
Give.
I, well, yeah, I, I assume it's for a dollar.
Well, and Diane, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, however, I, I heard you say all of these things at the last meeting, and I think the important thing for anyone listening tonight is to understand that the town owns the building, the LIA leases the building, the Historical Society sublets a space within the building. So regardless of who occupies the building, we are obligated to maintain a structurally sound and safe building for whoever occupies or utilizes that building. So regardless of your use or the LIA's use, you can take what you might do with your house, or your space, or any of that, and take that conversation right off the table, because we are bound. take that conversation right off the table, because we are bound, as a municipality, to different standards, which is precisely why we pursued the extensive conversation that we had, looking at absolutely every element of that building. So we can't, and, and this is not to detract in any way, shape, or form from the high value that the Historical Society offers the town. That's a complete, that's not the conversation. This isn't a conversation of the value of the Historical Society. This is a conversation about the structural integrity and safety of the building. And we offered it to either or both, the LIA or the Historical Society, as a gift, because as private groups, you would have the freedom to pursue the exact paradigm that you were asking the select board to.
But I did have a condition, that we fix it within a year or a year and a half, which, um, I mean, I'm sorry, we have no position to do that.
Well, would you like to renegotiate a counteroffer?
Well, I, I think we're interested in, um, and, and I'll, to be honest, if we had time to really discuss this amongst ourselves and figure out how we can go forward, if the building were returned to us in a safe condition, in other words, if the town would invest in repairing the things that they haven't.
But we can't do that for an arbitrary al- alternate figure. We have the figures of what it will cost us to do.
Well, that's if we do everything, they're talking about things that, replacing windows, no, that's to save energy. We, we don't even heat the building in the winter, or we don't need to heat the building in the winter. We do run a furnace, but it doesn't even need to be on. Well, okay, and we, we, we don't need to go into all the details of it, we have our opinion of what needs to be done and what doesn't need to be done. If there's time, we can research grants. We can look into historic preservation, which also gives us a chance, if we got on the register, to have fewer kinds of restrictions, I think some of the ADA stuff. That was bringing, in, in, that was bringing a building up to code for retail space on the second floor. That's a very lightly-used building. That's what, that's what it says, that they can bring it up to this standard.
But you understand that that's what the co, when you look at code of usage, that's.
But it is a very lightly-used building, I think we'll agree.
But co, code is code is code, and if we're using the space.
So, so if we were to renegotiate, and you could fix the things that we can't fix, because we don't have the money, then the idea of our organizations taking back the building and, and taking it over, taking it out of the town's purview, whatever, responsibility.
Okay. I don't, I didn't see, I didn't see who had it.
I just, I just want to clarify that the, um, the offer to the LIA or Historical Society or both, uh, my understanding was that, that it, it was on the condition that you make it structurally sound. So not to fix everything on that list, but, but just that it would be structurally sound. I don't know how much that would cost, but I would imagine.
More than we've got. I, I mean, I could tell you.
But, but much less than the whole list.
Yeah, okay, well, but nevertheless, Josh, we just don't have the capability of raising it, or, or the, the manpower, or whatever. The town does, and we don't.
David?
I agree with what you're saying, Diane. The problem I see with it is that I don't think the town has the liberty to be able to, in my opinion, I'm not a legal girl by any means, but I don't think the town has the liberty to fix parts of the area without fixing the whole. Because we're bound by state rules, federal rules, all kinds of rules and regulations, that the building must be X, Y, Z. And yes, the roof needs to be fixed, and that would solve some of its problems. But that doesn't do a thing for the mold and the saw. And that's also one of the violations that's there, and I can't remember them all right off, off the cuff, but I don't think, I was, I was a, um, I, I was pushing to have the study done that we did for the primary reason that, on old buildings, I was very afraid that we'd sink a moderate amount of money into something that in two years we'd have to tear it right off again, because something else that wasn't looked at far enough down needed to be fixed. Well, unfortunately, we found more areas tied together that need to be fixed, that I don't know if you can patch one without disrupting the next one, if, unless they're done all. Now, I mean, if, yeah, I'm gonna throw, I'm gonna get myself in big trouble on this one. If we gave it to you, and this is just me speaking, not the board by any means, if we gave it to you as, as is, with no stipulations, it's your building now, and if you came back and said it needs a roof on it, could the town give us money towards putting the roof on it? I would think we might be able to do that, was we donating the money to a good town organization that could do this. But we can't put a roof on it, we, the town, can't put a roof on it without fixing everything that's underneath it, or plan, the plan involved of everything underneath it, because you're going to get the cat before the horse, and it's not gonna.
Boy, that's an interesting approach. Maybe, maybe that's what we should do.
I mean, I, I, I mean, this is, this is just me talking. I don't, don't.
No, I know, David, I know, I know, I know. I, I know what you're saying. I guess I, I really have nothing more to say. I, I've told you all how I feel, I, I think it's very important, I think the town, this town is in pretty good shape. We have some very nice buildings. Our, our, our infrastructure, as far as buildings are concerned, is there. We have a lovely school that the state built for us, and we did contribute with the state and the townspeople. There's a woman in town who gave a piece of land to, to support, we do a lot of volunteer stuff in this town, and I, you know what it all is. Library, community building, uh, fire station, no, no town money in that. We, I guess that, the, we feel that to invest in this cultural heritage of this town, this is a pretty special place, go in a lot of other, we've got more historic buildings than Camden, I think. Go, go to some of the in, other towns in, in central Maine and look for some of the old stuff, it's not there. And we probably can afford to, to keep that building up. But only if, if you people believed in it, and believed that that was important, and I guess that's pretty much all I've got to say.
Thank you. Sure. Did, sorry, did you wanna say something first?
Well, Diane, I understand exactly what you're saying. I can't look you straight in the face and tell you we gotta spend, as a town, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that building. I just, I can't do it. We've got other taxpayers in this town that are collecting bottles to pay their taxes. And I gotta consider that, too.
Sorry.
Do you have a ready date?
Sorry, Diane.
I, I'm just.
I don't want a conversation between the audience and the board.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's tough. I, I can't, can't get behind this. We've, we've offered to give it to you, and have even offered, it had, and we've asked recently, right here, you wanna renegotiate that? And I'm not getting a, yes, we do, because you know what the fate is.
I thought I said.
You know what the fate is.
Please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, um.
You, you asked about renegotiating, I said we could be considerate.
Well, we gotta, we're at the umpteenth hour here.
Okay.
We are.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, yes, Bob.
Well, applause twenty-four Whitney Road, President of LIA. We're not gonna hash anything over. It's ad nauseam right now. So I'm just, want you to know, when you offered the gift, that there was no way in the world I could accept it, because I don't have my board of directors. The board of directors have to give, vote and give permission to do whatever we decide to do. Uh, unfortunately, I don't have a board of directors back until the end of May, and you're under another timetable, so, I'm not so sure we would've made the same decision if the board of directors were all here and we voted, because there are possibilities and some things we could do a little bit differently. If we had a vote of the board, we might've accepted your gift, number one. Number two is, um, you have, I've sat in that seat, you have a hard decision to make. I, I think you probably all made up your mind about what decision you're gonna make. So I would wonder if you would make that decision, decision tonight, because we have to finally know what we're working with here, just as well as you do. And I know the town has a liability issue. There's no question about that, although we do pay some insurance too, but we're both liable. So, uh, I know the second floor is a problem. Uh, we, the LIA, use the first floor, I don't know what your decision's gonna mean for the first floor as well as the second floor. Depends on what you wanna put before the voters. But I really would appreciate it if you decide to make a decision that you make it tonight, although I see you don't have a full board. But, uh, the longer we go without a decision, the more anguish we're all in, because we don't know which way to move here, whether we should look for alternatives, whether we shouldn't, et cetera. So that's, that's about all I have to say. It's been a long, as I said the last time, your heart tells you one thing, your business mind tells you another. So.
Yeah.
The LIA has worked, as you know, long and hard over the years for this building. But let's make a decision, whatever that decision is, and let's make it, so that we all know what we're working with here. And if in fact you're going to make a motion to do something that also affects the first floor, then we have to know that. I mean, I already ha, I already have it rented in August on the first floor, but I can, you know, don't cancel that. But, uh, there are still people who wanna come and, and use the LIA, because it's, it's memory time, family gathering. So, uh, nobody's talked about that, but I imagine your motion would mean what happens to the first floor as well as the second floor, whether we have a home, whether we don't have a home on the first floor. So, uh, I would just appreciate it if you could at least give some indication of what decision you're gonna make, uh, because we have to start looking too.
Yeah, Josh.
Um, in my short tenure on this board, this is the hardest decision that I've been faced with. And Kurt and I agree with you that I can't look anyone in the eye and say that we need to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this building. I mean, our proposed budget for the town is nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And that, you know, that's a lot of money. And so I think that we need to go with option A, which is to, um, to sell the property. Now, that would go to town meeting, and I would hope that everyone votes the way they, they feel is best, and, and the town can weigh in and decide if we should keep it or not. Um, it doesn't just end here, and that's what's great about this form of government, the, the, the five of us don't just make a decision and you have to live with it. You, you're the check. But I think after this long road of spending the money on the, on the, on the study, and, and going over it and offering the building, I think that's just what makes the most sense.
I think it is important for anyone listening to also consider, even if an option before us is to ask the voters to, who, essentially, um, nearly increase our budget by a hundred percent and raise all of the money in one fell swoop, which wouldn't make any sense at all, so I don't think we would ever pursue that. But if we were to pursue an option of borrowing, and even if we pulled, say, a hundred thousand dollars from, I don't know where, I mean, I, I hear Diane saying, we, the town has the money, when she says the town has the money, it's all of us sitting in this room, and the people at home, and the people we've heard poverty abatements from, and,
And her.
And so let's say we magically somehow squeeze a hundred thousand dollars out of the budget to put cash on the table for this project. And we somehow manage to pare all of the estimates down significantly, so that we're only borrowing four hundred thousand dollars. I mean, we're still looking at if we get permission from the town to borrow money, we're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. So it isn't just the cost of the project. It is, I, I mean, if we were to say, let's just say fifty thousand dollars from a fund, and we were to borrow six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we're gonna pay three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in interest, bringing the cost of the project to a million dollars. So, you know, it's, it's easy to talk about the estimate, but if we borrow the funds, it's going to cost our town, our future taxpayers, a lot more. And that is an incredibly difficult ask, um, of our taxpayers. You know, and again, it, I, I don't want this to be a conversation of the value of the Historical Society or the LIA to our town, because it isn't, that's not a question. Unfortunately, we're being asked by default to make that judgment. But what I wish had happened is that we could gift the building to one or both of these groups, and then they can pursue whatever timeline they want, in whatever fashion they want, however they want. Unfortunately, we can't apply that same thinking to our bureaucratic process, it's just the nature of the beast. So, um, yeah. David, do you have any other additional insight before we move on to some of these other mechanics?
I'm just, I'm just glad I'm not on the board.
Can I stir the pot?
Please.
I wanna ask Bob a question, if I could.
Sure. Bob, do you mind coming up to the podium again?
Bob.
Do you mind coming up to the podium again?
Bob, I got a question for you.
I was just picking up a line, I've got my hearing aids on.
Okay.
I don't blame you.
David, David's gonna yell at you.
Oh, he speaks so sloth, anyway.
Now, listen to this, David. If I heard you right, I have the hearing issues too, Bob, if I heard you right, you said that in, in May, when everybody gets back, and if you could have a vote of your organization, you might be able to do something. Is that, did I understand you right on that?
Well, we might get a vote to accept the gift, or buy it for a dollar, whatever you're gonna do, without any restriction, so that if we did anything, we could do it on our own timeframe. But the liability then is ours, not yours. And, uh, we would need some help in the cost of transfer of the deed. But other than that, I'm not so sure that, the letter you received with my name on it refusing the gift might not have happened if I had the board here. But they're all over the country, and they're not here, they're not gonna be back until May. So there might be some on the board that see, without restrictions, that we could do one thing or another, but I, as I tried to be honest with you, and I was honest with you in the last meeting, if we found, if we accepted it, and we took over the liability, but we found out we couldn't do what we would like to. but we found out we couldn't do what we would like to do, we would probably sell it. So I, I wouldn't want the town to look at us and say, "Oh, that was devious, you know, they bought it to sell it."
But if you sold it, could you not then use the proceeds for scholarships?
Correct, that's where it would go, yeah, all of it, all of it. Wouldn't be used for anything else.
I mean, I, I don't see that as a lose to the town.
I, for one, would be good with that.
Or building a smaller building for yourself.
I think that's a very real possibl, well, I'm just telling you here's a real possibility. But I, you need to come up with a warrant for town meeting before I can get the board together.
Right.
And that. Could I play one more question?
Please.
David.
He's got that tone in his voice.
Is there a reason that we couldn't put this A, B, and C vote off to the November election?
You, as the board, excuse me, can kick the can as far down the road as you wish.
My only thoughts of that is, is at that point, he would have time to have a yes or no answer. At each time.
I think we could, we could phrase a warrant that would.
Well, the, I don't think you can do that. I, I, I hope you don't try to do that. Well, I know it's straight show, but in answer to your, part of your question, if, if you went with option A, that's in here, there's nothing that precludes you, when the board, the LIA board got together and said, "We'd like to acquire this building," there's nothing that would preclude you from selling it to them for a dollar, or 50 cents, or a quarter.
Right.
You know?
Right, that's what I would. Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't.
As long as you determine that, you know, at, you know, terms and conditions deemed advisable.
Yeah, if we could come to an agreement, you would have, you know, after town meeting.
Town meeting is June, when would your warrant be?
Uh, open port, well.
Ninth and 11th.
Yeah.
Ninth for voting, 11th for the open.
Yeah, so this would be.
So we would probably have a decision prior to that.
And then it would be waiting on the town to give us authorization to move forward or something.
But I do wanna assure you that, because if we do sell it, if we find out after we study it, that that's what we have to do. Every dime of that money, all of it, goes to scholarships for Lincolnville kids. Doesn't go anywhere else. Not for beautifications, not for anything, goes to, that's our main goal, scholarships. So in a way, it works out well because all the money goes back to Lincolnville kids. If we do have to sell it. And we do give out a lot of money for, for an organization our size. The high school's always happy to hear from us. So just to let you know, that would be what would happen if we sold it. I personally, as the president, would recommend that we accept the gift, that we study it. The first floor is still habitable, that we help the Historical Society, if that's what it comes to, to find a place for their archives, et cetera, temporarily. And, and if we find out that, after we've gone over everything, as your study concluded, then we would probably put it up for sale. But it goes, but the money in essence goes right back to Lincolnville. Doesn't go for anything else.
Which would be a wonderful, that would be a wonderful gift.
In other words, if they got $25,000 for it, that's $25,000 more for Lincolnville kids.
Yeah, yeah.
For scholarships.
Yes.
So that, I didn't want you to think that my refusal on the letter you got was either rude or, or anything else. Certainly wasn't bad, it's just I don't have a board yet.
Sure.
That's helpful to hear.
It, it is very, it's very helpful to hear, because certainly we, I think we were generally sort of surprised.
I, I might sleep tonight.
Does anyone have any more questions for Bob now?
I, I just wanna say that I, I'm, I'm confident that, that if, 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 if the building is no longer utilized by, by the town or by the LIA, that, that we would, in terms of the Historical Society's archives, that we would, the town would find a home for it, that, that, that we value this. And we would find a home for not only archives, but a, a place for them to keep working. Because that's, that's all of ours, and that's so important. So I don't, I'm not frankly worried that, that if the building is eventually sold, that suddenly everything gets put into storage and, and isn't touched again. I think that we all want that to continue, so.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, you do give us a small stipend every year, and it would be nice if we could receive that for another year, to help us out, but.
Well, it's in the budget, I don't think anyone, I mean, it's written in the budget.
That would be appreciated as we keep the place heated, et cetera, et cetera, while we, we look at what we can do with it.
Okay, thank you very much for your insight. So let's have a brief conversation about immediate and into the foreseeable future realities of use for our tenants of this building. We have before us a draft to send to the LIA. Does anyone have any changes or amendments they might wanna make to this draft letter, which containing therein is simply the, the town's follow-up just regarding safety of, of the building?
It's, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Um, under number three, minimize use of the second floor, we, we don't mean, members of the Historical Society can't go and continue their work, right? We just mean, just a handful of people at a time, two at the most, or?
Well, without, without really being able to further specify, I think we reference the structural engineering report, and the tenants are in possession of that report. And so the restriction and minimal usage essentially refers back to that saying, it doesn't mean never go up there, but it means with consideration of the structural integrity. Do you feel like that's a fair statement, David?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it was challenging with the, for lack of a better word, limited observations that the engineers were able to do to pinpoint that because they looked at it here, and they looked at it across the room over there. And if conditions changed that they couldn't see, either for the good or the bad, it's hard to say, you know, have one person there, or 10, or 100. And so they used some hedgery, hedgewards in their report, and we're passing those on to our tenants.
So if everyone approves the draft, can I have a motion, please?
I.
111.
I moved that the, where is it?
Right there, Tom.
This one right here?
No.
I move that the board authorize the board chair to sign and send the letter regarding the short-term precautions that need to be taken at the building that the town leases to the Lincolnville Improvement Association at 22 Beach Road in order to address the structural load deficiencies of the existing second-floor framing.
So moved?
Second.
Second?
Just note that there's 33 Beach Road, because apparently I can't type. With the amendment that the address has changed to 33 Beach Road.
As amended, do we have a second for the amendment? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And so now on to the meat of the conversation. It's highly recommended that the board not wait, and that we pursue putting an article before the voters of Lincolnville, ideally on the ninth, Tuesday, via a referendum ballot. And so I would.
Are you gonna need to have the option read?
Uh, yeah, yeah, no, really?
I think just option.
Wait, I think you can just reference the letter. Because it's gonna come, whatever you choose to do is coming back to you on the warrant that you have to approve regardless.
Yeah.
I move that the board instruct the town administrator to include on the annual town meeting warrant, option A, that the article be voted on by the referendum ballot as part of the voting to be conducted on Tuesday, June 9, 2020, and that the recommendation of the budget committee regarding this article be sought.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
You might tell the audience what option A.
Would, would anyone care to read it?
I can read it. To vote by secret ballot on the following referendum question, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell the property located at 33 Beach Road, tax map one, lot 49, known as the Lincolnville Improvement Association Building and Site, by a means and upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems advisable, and to execute such contracts, deeds, and other instruments, and to take such other actions as may, in the Board of Selectmen's judgment, be advisable to affect the sale of such property.
Thank you. Anything else on this particular subject? Seeing nothing, let's move along to public input for the fiscal year 2021 municipal budget. Would anyone care to get up and speak? Yes, please, come up.
Good evening, Greta DeLisanne, St. Smart Road. I came in today and just looked briefly at the municipal budget. I want to speak to, I don't have a copy of it, so I don't know which page to tell you to go to.
Which, which department?
But it's about, it's under capital improvement program. And so it's the athletic infrastructure, down toward the bottom of the page, I think it's the third one.
Yep.
From the bottom. It reads tennis court resurfacing, current balance $3,500, which as I understand, the town voted to establish a, a fund at fiscal year 20 town meeting. So that's that current balance. Estimager, estimated project cost $15,000. And then it says fiscal year 21 request equals $11,500, which would be the, the balance of what that one estimate is. So I'm just here to speak in favor of, if, if that seems to be difficult for the town, then to just do a portion of that, and then in fiscal year 22, is that right? Next year? Then we would have likely the full amount. And then we could do the court maintenance at that point, which I think is really important. Given the last item agenda, it's important to maintain infrastructure. So I'm just here to speak in favor of that. And then, I think it's on the next page, but it may not be, let's see. This is also capital improvement program, but it's a separate page. Oh, boy. So I, maybe it's the other way, hang on just a second.
I can't help but find it if I know where it is.
Yeah, so it's about, I think I have it, so it's probably the page previous. It's also, it says athletic infrastructure maintenance, and it has tennis courts, pickleball net, tape, and paint, and that says RC, so I think that's Recreation Commission, $500.
Page 18.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, under the Recreation Commission.
That would be really helpful. We fundraised ourselves for two portable net systems that were used a lot last year, and then the third court, we used my personal net. But we are having such a huge turnout that we anticipate that there will be enough people to have four courts going at a time. Just this last Saturday, we had 23 people there, and we can only accommodate in the gym 12 people at a time. So if we could have town help to get two more net systems, then we would have all that we need. And as I mentioned, we had fundraised for the two that we have and for the storage box. And then the trash and redemption container for the tennis courts at $1,500. I have not had a chance to speak to the rec commission, so they may have different criteria and reasons for requesting that, and I haven't had the time to talk with them. I just wanna give you my experience, having been down at those courts several times a week in the spring, summer, and fall for the last two years doing pickleball. There has not been a trash receptacle there, and there has not had a need to be one there. I don't see trash there. So I just wanted to give you that information. People seem to be very respectful, and you might see an occasional empty tennis ball container. There aren't beverage containers, there's really nothing there, so I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other public input on the budget? Okay. Let's move along to board deliberations and recommendations of the draft budget. David, I'm missing the last go around. Was there an update from last meeting?
No.
Okay.
Still working from the same February 10th draft.
Perfect. Do we wanna begin at the beginning and just run through it?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Madam Chair, as we move through the budget, I have some good news and some bad news.
Okay.
And I'll dove it out slowly, but I'll start with the bad news on page four, which is also maybe good news.
Okay.
For an employee. There may be a change in one employee's personal life in the upcoming year. And regarding that, we may, the board ought to consider upping the insurance line to $83,590, which is the fourth line down. Eighty, eighty-three what, David? Five ninety.
Do you have what the percentage change, or just the amount?
So you wanna know what, what the change from last year would be if we did that?
Or, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have a thingy about it.
I do. If I get to the right page on this thing. Eighty-three, five ninety divided by seven, five, seven, one, one. That would be a 10.4% increase.
Okay.
What does that bring the total to, David? At the bottom? Yeah. I don't know, hang on a second. I gotta, I wanna write this number down before I lose it again, if you don't mind. And then, let's see. Clear. Four, five, two, eight, nine, oh, minus seven, this way. Seven, eight, oh. Plus, dollars. Slow down. Four, five, two, eight, nine, oh. Minus, six. Slow down. Four, five, two, eight, nine, oh, minus, seven, 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 eight, oh, plus, eighty-three, five, ninety. Four fifty-eight, seven hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, anything else on page four, administration and finance?
Um, David, can you just remind us, um, why hardware purchases went up?
Sure.
So much.
Um, hardware purchases. Hardware purchases. Cause that's what our software guy told us to do. Um, hardware maintenance or hardware purchases?
Uh, hardware purchases.
Purchases. Two hundred dollars. Not real well. Hardware purchases. Well, the detail talks about the backup, replacing the backup tapes, uninterrupted power supply and printer.
Yeah.
But why is that? Twenty-three hundred dollars. I might have to walk in the other room and grab a different book. Can I do that?
Sure.
Good. See you tomorrow.
We'll be here waiting, cause we don't have to turn the camera off.
Sorry, was that a long awkward pause?
No, it was totally fine.
What have you been doing?
Waking up. Getting this mess. Challenges that we get most of that from our IT person and grew a bit differently than he does. Fourteen hundred dollars for the new backup tapes and nine hundred dollars for the uninterrupted power supply and printer.
And the printers, that's a rent, that's, no, sorry, that, you, there's a printer as well as the, um, the photocopier, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
A number of people have printers at their workstations. We're all networked to the copier, so if we're doing budgets, we can just hit that and away it goes. But everybody except for Vern and I have printers as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry it took you so long.
Anything else under administration and finance? All right, skipping page five, which are explanations to page six, protection animal control. Anything there? Okay. Moving along, page seven, parking enforcement. Anyone who is interested in helping our town organize and manage our parking, please call the town office and apply today.
Somebody should advertise that soon.
This very second. Uh, anything there? Okay, let's move along to page eight, protection fire department.
So, under truck maintenance, were we gonna go from ninety-five hundred to fifteen thousand? Is that the line?
Yeah, well, I, I guess, and shame on us for not clarifying, I feel like, um, his annual totals for the last couple of years seem to be, uh, a bit off from fiscal year twenty nineteen actual. Oh, no, that's, no, they're, they're roughly the same, but he did say fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars would.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a big jump, but should we put it in there and then?
I, I feel, I feel we should.
Okay. Not opposed to that.
Yeah, let's do it.
Do what?
Increase truck maintenance to fifteen.
Six, sixteen, one, six, right? Or one, five, one, five.
One, five.
Okay. Anything else under, do folks want percentage increases in totals for that? Okay. Uh, let's move along.
Oh, I, I have, I have something on, on this page.
Oh, sure, okay, sorry.
That's right. Um, okay, volunteer firefighter wages.
Yes.
So, uh, currently, as the chief said, we compensate firefighters for twelve dollars per call, which is minimum wage. Um, and we got this, uh, and this package of volunteer firefighter wages for different towns around us.
Yep.
And I was, uh, actually pretty surprised where, with the exception of Hope, which does a ten thousand dollar split between fifteen to sixteen people, but besides them, it seems like everyone else does an hourly wage. So even if they're minimum wage, um, they're getting paid more, you know, if they're there for three hours, they get paid for three hours. In Lincolnville, you're only paid twelve dollars. It doesn't matter how long you're there. Uh, I, at first was gonna recommend we go up to fifteen dollars per call, but now that I see that puts us behind everyone else in our area, but I don't know what's, what's right. It seems like hourly is the right thing to do. But what do you guys think?
I wouldn't. Should've asked how many hours they, we don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how many hours they log on average annually, cause we would need that figure in order to put that in here.
Yeah.
One of the things that, um, has been expressed to me in the past, and I didn't specifically talk to the chief about this with this round, although we knew we were contacting others, is, um, previous chiefs have looked to have it not be administratively burdensome, shall I say, in, oh, you showed up at, you know, six, you at six fifteen, you at six thirty, and you almost need a payroll clerk to keep, you know, and, oh, you left, when'd you leave, John? You know, and, um, so he, there had been concerns expressed in the past. That's one thing about call is they know who's on site or who shows up because they have to be responsible to make sure that those that show up go home. Um, and some of the others in the past, and I don't know if they, if you polled them, what they'd say today, some of the others in the past say, you know, things like, I don't wanna be on the planning board, I, but I still wanna, in essence, volunteer for my town, so I chose to be on the fire department. I don't think anybody turned down the change in the wage, that's, that being said, though, so.
Okay, with that in mind, I propose that we raise it to fifteen dollars a call and my understa- I'm pretty sure that would increase at three thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars. We wanna quickly multiply three times one thousand two hundred twenty-five. And then the math still stays, stays easy.
One of the things about a town like this is it, it is very valuable to have a fire department that comes when you call.
Hmm.
Um, I think it's money well spent. Fifteen dollars per call is a drop in the bucket compared to what they're sacrificing. I personally don't have, I, I'd like to pay him more than that, but I know fifteen dollars, I think, is, is great.
Well, it's a good start of a conversation and then we can maybe do a little bit more homework. Um, as we go and figure out the scope of, of a future conversation.
So you wanna adjust that?
Yeah, what is, does, is Josh's math right?
Eighteen, three seventy-five? Is that what you said?
An increase of three thousand six hundred seventy-five.
I don't know. I did, I just took fourteen seventy divided back by twelve and then multiplied by fifteen.
Okay, so what, sorry, what was the total?
Um, on firefighter wages?
Yes.
Change that to eighteen, three seventy-five.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you gotta change VICA or Medicare to twenty-one eighty-three.
Okay. Great.
And I probably.
We don't wanna change that.
Well, then you call your congressman and tell him, um, if the other thing that we could do, we could, I mean, you can do whatever you want, but, um, is cha- make that change now, but you could also task perhaps, uh, wage and personnel to work with the fire department in the coming year to come up with a, um.
That's a fantastic idea, David. Let's, let's put that on our next agenda.
Long-term compensatory plan.
Yes.
There you go. How's that work, huh? I've been sitting here all night long thinking.
Gold star for that. Um, okay, anything else on page eight under protection fire department? Okay. Skipping page nine, which is just further descriptions to page ten, protection other. Uh, we have streetlights, insurances, legal services, emergency ambulance, dispatch, et cetera. Uh, anything there?
We've talked about, uh, increasing the portable road closed barriers from four to six.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think that's it. I think that's a great idea.
For twelve hundred dollars.
Should be twelve hundred.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree with that.
See, can I add another two hun-
Another four hundred, yep.
So that's gonna be twenty-nine, twenty-two, okay.
Okay. Anything else on page ten? Uh, moving on to page eleven, town office building. Anything there? I know we talked about environmental alarms. Did that conversation go anywhere?
Water. Water sensors for, in the cellar, or secure record storage, things of that nature.
I didn't do anything with it.
We should have, I mean, it was in the winner.
We should have.
For the basement.
Yeah, that should be.
So do we wanna get some figures?
I think we should. I mean, knock on wood, we haven't had any trouble, but I think we really should look into it.
Looking at here.
Okay, I don't have a, in a dollar amount.
Neither do I.
Tag your it. Okay.
So, water temperature, um, what, what am I asking for when I call it?
Low temp and water intrusion. Low temp and/or water intrusion will add to our.
Yeah.
Add to the security system line?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, page eleven? Page twelve, contingency. David, don't hate me forever. I can already feel your, what if we drop that by two to eight thousand?
What's your thinking?
Why the heck not? We, I, I'm just thinking of the last decade of contingency and knowing that you never know, and that's why contingency is what it is, but it, given that we've added and added and added so far tonight, it is a subtraction. I'm just, I'm not necessarily betrothed to that idea, but I'm just gonna throw it out there.
How many times have we come close to, uh, ten thousand on contingency that you can think of?
Due to prudent fiscal management, never.
Okay. I mean, it's just my, if we're never gonna come near it, then we can.
Oh, if you'd like to, I could spend it all. Or excuse me, you could spend it all.
We definitely could spend it all. It doesn't mean that we should.
I really hate personally going back to have a town meeting to ask, let us take some more money out of savings, because we ran out.
Yep. Yep, and that's, that's the excellent argument for not touching it.
What we don't spend goes into saving next year.
Yep.
Basically.
Yeah.
Um, but.
I feel like I would.
I, I could go either way.
I feel like I would have been remiss if I didn't bring it up, so. If there's no takers, we can move along to page thirteen.
Sounds good.
Okay. Page thirteen is code enforcement. Anything there? We have one. Okay. Same thing with assessing, page fourteen.
Can't really change that.
Nope, thank you, Vern. Uh, page fifteen, public works highways and bridges. Any further questions, clarifications, changes? Okay, let's move. Okay, let's move along. Page sixteen, uh, public works transfer station.
We can't do a lot about that.
Nope. There it is. There it is, enjoy the number. There we go. Page seventeen, public works harbor. Anything there?
Um, snow removal, that's we had talked about the, the idea of not plowing and just snowblowing, is that? I don't know if that's something we weren't consider, if that would change the number, if that's really even gonna change uh, the impact on the, on the deck.
Yeah, so mowing is rolled into our larger-
Yeah, fire station here.
And why don't we do that with plowing?
Just with, with meaning to our plumbing contract?
Yeah.
History, tradition, never have.
I really would like to see that deck snowblowed or something a little different than a, than a ten-foot blade.
Yeah.
You know, you go over to Alsborough, and they've got a snow blower sitting right there, and I asked, is that a snow blower down there? You don't have trouble with people, they said, that's for our, that's for our folks and our dog. He said, we, that's how we do it. And I just think it would preserve. Yep, it's been what, thirty-some odd years since that deck was put together down there, but I don't, I don't care how you spin it, you can angle the plank, and you can put it sideways, you can put it lengthways. A steel blade on a three-quarter to one-time truck is gonna do damage somehow, some way. And it's not pavement.
I, the deck, in all considerations, lasted very well for thirty, for the thirty years, twenty-eight years or whatever it's been sitting there, but it would last longer if we weren't plowing it. Um, I have to agree that a certain amount of it may be the tires turning from the wearpath factors and everything, that may very well be. I mean, you get soft spots, and then lumbering, it, trees aren't all the same density.
Well, all that-
But it's, but it, it would, uh, snowblowing would alleviate a lot of problems on that way, but I dare say they probably could plow it in fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, and snowball's gonna take probably two hours.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna run into a fair, you're gonna run into a fair amount more labor, labor-wise doing it. And repeat times, that's multiplied per storm every three inches or whatever they set it at.
I guess all that being said, I would be curious to see if, considering the light snow load we've had this winter, if our plowing contractor wouldn't be willing to do a pass or two down there. Um, it just, again, a- as per the mowing conversation that we had years ago, I don't see why we shouldn't have it be a comprehensive part of the bidding.
That, that's currently plowed by our harbor master?
Yeah, we pay him separately for that.
Okay.
So, I guess we can talk either tonight or sometime between now and when we have snow again about the methodology for snow removal? Guess the question is, if we're going to do something beyond um, the current practice, what's the financial implications for the budget? Or do we, because we left contingency alone, do we think in the back of our mind if we need it for?
I'm hoping that they just roll it in, because they've had a pretty light load-
Maybe.
For what we're paying them. I understand there are questions, but we had public input for the budget already, and this is board deliberations now. Um, so anything else on public works harbor?
I, I just have one thing. I just want the board to know that I was very disappointed that for the third year in a row, I wasn't able to sit with the harbor master when his budget was on the table, and look at him and ask him questions. I have no recommendation for changes other than be advised.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you. Uh, moving on, page eighteen, public works other, this includes dams, Briesmer Park, Lincolnville Beach, Veterans Park, Septic, athletic fields, athletic infrastructure maintenance, Duck Trap Beach. Uh, any thoughts or recommendations there?
Um, I've got a few.
Yeah.
First one, mowing, I think we should raise it to seven hundred fifty dollars.
Okay.
Seeing he's not had a raise in a very long time, so.
Yeah.
We, I think we had mentioned that at the last meeting.
You did, yeah.
Um, let's see, and Greta made a really interesting point about the, the trash container, the, the need for one. I mean, if, if person's there several times a week, doesn't see any trash, I, I'm not really sure why we need to put that there. I mean, they're not pretty, and if we don't need it, then
Yeah.
why add it?
Yes, I think we should eliminate that line.
Okay.
Which one's that?
That is-
Uh, under athletics, athletic infrastructure maintenance.
Yeah.
Uh, was there other, or that's under capital improvement, I may be jumping ahead, the other conversation of other trash bins? Okay. Uh-
Well, there was a trash receptacle here under Briesmer Park maintenance, too.
Oh, yeah, okay, so where?
Oh, right there, okay.
There was some back and forth about that at your last meeting, where where, where do you feel like, you know, for a thousand dollars, do we need? Do you need that?
Well, I would.
There currently is trash and recycling containers.
No, it's, sorry, there's trash.
There's trash.
There's a trash barrel next to the porta potty that gets emptied periodically.
And, thank you, so this is where the con- thank you for reminding me, the conversation was is that it is often quite full, so we had got to the point where we just need to increase the amount of pickups rather than new containers?
So the, my understanding is that, the, the thinking was to have uh, the same type of trash receptacles here, and at, at the beach, no, the beach would still stay the same.
I think we talked about Duck Trap.
Duck, yeah, so Duck Trap and Briesmer. Um, I like that idea, uh, this receptacle would last decades if we get a nice one, so.
So does that mean also adding a thousand dollars to Duck Trap? Is that-
Yes.
The conversation then, so it would be the and would that also having a porta potty down there at Duck Trap Beach, so that would increase that to sixteen hundred dollars?
Um, yes, but David, we, you, so we talked about the price of these trash receptacles, and it
Mm-hmm.
and just remind us, you, you couldn't, the decent ones were fifteen hundred, was that?
Well, we, I went to the, to a vendor we use for something else, just because I knew what the quality of their thing was, and quickly found one, I think it was thirteen hundred bucks, which is pretty pricey, but they're, they're rugged, you know, they're made for an outdoor setup, set it there and, you know, empty it. Um, there are, we, we would look to try to find one that was suitably built, that was less expensive, but that's the neighborhood you're looking in for a commercial thing that gives you.
So do we need to put thirteen hundred under Briesmer for trash receptacle, and an additional thirteen?
Well, I'm cautiously optimistic you could find something for a grand.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're gonna add, add a thousand under Duck Trap and keep the thousand under Briesmer?
Yeah.
So that'd be sixteen hundred.
Okay.
And delete the fifteen hundred under athletic field tennis court, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else there?
The, uh, under the athletic infrastructure maintenance, tenant court, pickleball, net, tape, and paint?
Yeah.
Is that for outside?
Yeah.
Well, we're already putting money away to reseal and re-stripe, right?
Uh, yeah.
Um, and, you know, we don't buy any marking tape or anything like that for any other organizations, do we?
No.
We just maintain our structure, so I think, I don't know why we're-
Deduct that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, for the pickleball, um, it's are, are we gonna be repainting this, this year?
Uh, we have yet to get to that part of the conversation.
But my understanding was, was that, that-
But regardless, it would eliminate tape and paint, that's a definite no.
Yeah. Yeah, cause we talked about, we don't want-
Right. I mean, that just, that might just be a conversation for next year, once we actually, if depending on where the conversation goes with regards to um, whether we go ahead with painting or not this year. Anything else on page eighteen?
So what did you do with that five hundred dollar number?
We're eliminating it for this year. Okay. Page nineteen, boards and committees, anything there? See, nothing, let's move along to page twenty. Municipal support, this is historical society, McGonagall Quirk Watershed Cemeteries, library, Memorial Day, general assistants, moderator, ballot clerks, registrar of voters, and LIA building.
Well, that LIA building request is, is questionable.
However-
But-
best case scenario, we are able to sell it for a dollar to the LIA. There will still be maintenance overlap, and uh, worst case scenario, we do end up putting it for sale, we're still caring and maintaining for it, and so I, I wouldn't recommend decreasing that, so.
Yeah.
Um, I will say with the library, um, I would like to see that reduced to a thousand, this is the second year in a row that we have been presented financials from them that show a surplus. Um, I would be, I, it's not a conversation about the value of the library to the town, uh, but I would like to see it on par with the historical society who receives a thousand dollars from us. And I would certainly think that if the library was ever in a financial need, that they could come to the town, and we would be more than willing to help. Without putting words in, so, um, I would like to see that line reduced by two thousand.
I think that I could get behind reducing it by one thousand, just so it's not such a big shock.
Yes, but they've had, they've had two, last year they showed a three thousand dollar plus surplus, mind you, they're a nonprofit.
Yeah.
And this year it is over five thousand dollar surplus. And Lois herself said that they're having a very good financial year. I guess for an organization that was promised to cost the town nothing, I ha- I have a hard time continuously asking for this amount, asking the taxpayers to subsidize this, when they're quite healthy financially. And it, you know, we're talking about for this year, we're not talk, this, this isn't, you know-
Year by year.
It, it, that's part of the beauty of having an annual budget, is that we can continuously have this conversation and tweak it if we need to, within reason, so. That's my proposal.
Uh, I'm good with that.
David, your thoughts?
Hmm?
Your, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that, yep.
Got that, David?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Page twenty-one is more explanations. Uh, page twenty-two, provider agencies, anything there? Again, I'm, I'm really impressed with the work that the budget committee is doing with the provider agencies, and feeling really good about the recommendations that have come forward to us in the budget. Uh, so page twenty-three, capital improvement program. This includes fire truck fund, harbor improvement, road improvement, building repair fund, uh, beach sidewalk light upgrade, which is a moot point, those, these are all, yes, yes, yes.
Uh, ju- this is another bad page, bad news page?
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Uh, the first thing is under fire station security system?
Yes.
Although it said eight thousand in the request, and you obviously can't add, because if you look down at the explanation, there's eight thousand, and thousand, it really should be nine.
Yeah.
And the board asked for a follow-up on the striping of the, from the rec committee for the pickleball, they had recommended four courts.
Uh-huh.
Which at three hundred dollars a court, be twelve hundred dollars, ought to be added to the athletic infrastructure request of eleven five, which would make it twelve seven.
Okay.
Which when added to the drainage would be what, twenty-six two?
Twenty-six two.
If I did my math right. If you were to recommend both of them.
Okay.
All of that.
Um, I really appreciate Greta's insight, and I definitely would make the recommendation that we ask for half this year, and then next year, ask the taxpayers to raise the balance for um, the work to uh, the tennis courts.
So, so in that, in that case, we wouldn't paint, right, just to, just to be clear, okay?
Correct, we'd ask the taxpayers to raise another big chunk, and then pursue it.
Okay, and then next year, we would, or yeah, fiscal year twenty-two, we would resurface paint, pickleball paint, all of that, okay?
So that would change the twenty-one request of athletic infrastructure to half of the eleven five, half of the twelve seven, yeah, what number you wanna put in there?
The eleven five included two pickleball courts?
No.
Or just, that's just, okay?
That was just the resurfacing.
I would say, I mean, it's not going whatever the future iteration of us sitting here is, putting six three fifty in. Regardless is going to get us that much closer, whether it's tennis courts or four pickleball courts in addition to.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So six thousand three hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
And then the thirteen five on the drainage still? Nineteen eight fifty. So that would change twenty-five thousand down to nineteen eight fifty, in that line, right?
Is that right?
Right, 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 right at three, yes, yes, that's right.
So nineteen?
Nineteen eight fifty.
Nineteen eight fifty.
Okay.
Great.
Anything else on this page? Okay?
Oh wait, sorry, one, one thing, the main street sidewalk, ten thousand dollars. Six-foot wide paved block.
Yep.
Um, so that's, just trying to think, have we?
From the.
That would be from the, yeah.
Library to. Yeah. Non- upon road to the crosswalk.
Yep, to provide safe off-road passage for anyone, but especially the kiddos.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Uh, page twenty-four, debt service, look at it, enjoy the number.
A couple more years.
Getting there, just getting there.
Yep. And page twenty-five, budget totals, uh, that's, yes.
This is a good news page.
Well, not a, not after what we've done tonight.
Well, I, I can give you an option.
Okay.
The state of Maine has come out with a new estimate for revenue sharing.
Mm-hmm.
So if you wanted to, uh, you could feel comfortable in changing the revenue sharing line from six hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars to six hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and eleven, which would be twenty-four thousand sixty-seven dollars higher, which would reduce the property tax burden by twenty-four thousand sixty-seven dollars.
Great. And then we've made.
Can I feel good about making that change under the selectmen's column?
Yes.
Yep.
Two-eight-eight.
Okay. Anything else on fiscal year twenty-twenty-one? Okay, yes?
So the only thing I believe that remains in limbo is to get an estimate on the low temp water intrusion for the town office. So when this come, I was hoping we'd get through it, but close, this is close.
Very, very close.
So when this comes back, we can, we'll include that number in town office security system or whatever, whatever the line is. Hopefully then it can get your final blessing on the twenty-third, 'cause it'll go to the budget committee on the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
And we'll obviously make all these changes and stick these numbers in here.
Yep.
Okay, it's good.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Moving rapidly along, we have agenda item number fourteen. Which is before you terms and conditions from CMP, uh, for streetlight elimination and conversion agreement.
So it's been a long time coming, but the board, uh, after getting citizen input, made some choices on elimination of streetlights and the conversion to LED of the others, and CMP and I finally worked the magic and got a squid around on where these lights were and where they weren't, and there.
Yep.
So this implements, or will be the next step in the implementation of the board's wishes.
Yes.
If approved.
Sure, we have a question from the audience, before you, yeah, come on up.
Bob Plas, I would like to know which street light's gonna be left on? Uh, because I think I have a couple questions. Hopefully not.
Okay. So, working from the bottom up on this list? All right. Uh, the. Left on, the intersection of Youngtown Road and Route one-seventy-three. Intersection of Searsmont Road, Heel Road, Belfast Road, and Main Street. Petunia Pump. Who lives in it, Walter Lamont Junior, Jackie Watts' house here in the center?
Where?
Right here on Route one-seventy-three, Main Street.
Yep, midtown.
Midtown. Uh. Fire Department on Camden Road. Whitney Road and Route one. And Duck Trap Road, Route one.
And up, up Whitney Road?
No, Whitney Road and Route one is on.
Whitney Road stays on?
Yep.
Duck Trap Road stays on?
Correct.
Okay, I have a question about Bay Shore Baptist Church.
Come on up to the podium, so everybody at home can enjoy your question also.
My question is this, to keep a street light on is a minute amount of money, I'm sure you know, you look at your budgets. That street light at Bay Shore Baptist Church has been there forever. Forever, they used to, they used to use that light when they're coming in the bay at night, uh, along with the steeple. I don't see any reason to shut it off, we do light up Bay Shore Baptist Church at the front for a couple hours at night, but not all night, for sure. I don't see any, and there is traffic going in and out of there, and we do have functions in the evening, et cetera. I see no reason to shut that off for the amount of money that you would save. It, it's a minute amount of money, and I don't think, 'cause I don't think people should have to pay for their own lights anyway, but anyway, I don't think that should become an expense for the church to keep that light on, it's been there forever, so why now are we gonna shut the light off? Route one's a very, well, you all know for sure, Route one at night is brutal, I mean, the state cops are spending more and more time up there, as are the sheriffs, they go flying down there, once they get out of the beach, they go flying. They go by that church, they go right, and then you're right on Duck Trap Road, and then before you know it, you're on Whitney Road. So I think that light should stay on, I think it's a safety feature. Being a former police commissioner, I don't believe that darkness means safety, so I would request that that light stay on in front of the church, I see no reason to shut it off. Now, if the church were lit up around the clock, you know, that's another issue, but it's not. Uh, we only light it up for a couple hours after dark, sometimes three hours, but, uh, I don't see any reason after all of these decades to turn that light off.
Thoughts?
Does someone, so we got a recommendation, right, from the, uh.
You've, you, the, yeah, it's the same board that's here now, asked for a sidego- sidewalk and streetlight committee. And they made the recommendation to change out the sidewalk lights to the LED, which we've done, and made a recommendation for elimination of a number of streetlights, I believe you took almost all, if not all, the recommendations on that. And just to, just in, for knowledge, um, a sh- an LED streetlight will cost the town nine dollars a month, a hundred and eight dollars a year for each one you have on.
I mean, can we change our minds and ask for it to be converted to LED and?
You can, uh, until we sign the agreement, you can do whatever you so choose. And even after you sign the agreement, if you choose to turn one back on.
I know, but while, while we've got them, I don't, you know, (laugh) I feel like we've got their attention, let's not. Yeah.
Richard Lawson, twenty Lily Lane and twelve McKay Road. Uh, just a question on these streetlights, these are all public town-paid-for streetlights, and I gotta shut my two off, my two area lights off down at the beach.
These are municipally leased streetlights, there are a number of um, fixtures that other people lease from Central Maine Power, that.
Yes.
Yes, so.
We don't have, we don't have anything to do with.
Influsion on that, okay.
No.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm good, then I'm fine with that, but I, I would like to leave that Bay Shore Baptist Church light on. In fact, any light is good light. And, you know, we've lost a lot of ambient light down at the beach. Some people don't want it, some people do, I don't argue with that, but we've already lost a lot of light, I really don't think we need to lose anymore.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't be opposed at all to converting it to LED and leaving it alone.
And we, we never received a complaint about that light, that, about the church, right?
Mm-mm, yep, come on down.
Cindy Donovan, Tangled Road, um, well, as you know, I was part of the streetlight committee, and one of the considerations that we had were, certainly was about safety, and therefore we determined that all of those that were at intersections definitely should be left on, those that were here in the center should be left on because there aren't any sidewalk lights there, that the ones that are down at the beach would be redundant light, and we went down and Josh was with us, and we did all those measurements of how much light was being produced, and and I think John has since done some more studies with his light meter stuff to show that the chain, the actual light at the surface level has not actually changed, um, which, you know, is a good thing, 'cause that's, that's really where we needed. Uh, the choice around the Baptist Church one was pro- a lot of it was about, well, saving energy, saving, um, money, because they do cost a sort of a fair amount of money, but also it was about being a private church. It was bec- in the church here in the center does not have a street light. It's been there at least as long, and I think longer than the Bay Shore Church has, so that's part, that was part of the considerations that we had, that it felt like that was a private thing, and that private entities should take care of their own electricity, they really felt that it was needed. When I drive up through there, I don't do the middle of the night, so I, at least I try not to, every time I've driven up through, past there, the lights are, the lights that you've put in there are, look lovely on the steeple, and they're very bright down below, and as a driver, they've been, well, anyway. That, so that's, that's my take on that.
Okay, sure, thank you, I don't wanna get into a back and forth, I've, we've heard if you have a brand-new point to make with regards to the light, fine, but this isn't necessarily a debate about the value of any one given light. Okay, hold, Greta had, Greta had her hand up, so I'd like to hear from Greta.
Greta Klesin, Searsmont Road, so I was also part of the ad hoc beach lighting and, and lighting, um, committee, and I just wanna add one other piece of information, which is when we did the research and we were looking at different lights and where the light actually went, another consideration was that the overhead lights, the CMP lights, that light, um, a large portion of it, I don't have that number in my head, it's been a year and a half or two, but a large portion of it went up into the sky, and we're trying to protect, um, night sky here in Maine.
Okay.
Just a point of.
Sure, yep, come on up, uh.
I just wanna clear one thing up, that it's not a private building, that's a public building, used for public functions by different people in town evenings and days, but it's not a private building, it may be a church, but it's open to the public and it's used by the public for different functions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have, um, the proposals that the board had accepted based on recommendations, we've heard some additional thoughts in, insight, uh, I'd like to hear the board's recommendations, so we can move forward.
So any streetlight we convert to LED, we're signing a fifteen-year contract?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, so it's, it's not like next year, we can say, oh, let's just turn off this.
You can turn off, but there's a, there's a declining scale, you gotta buy it out, in, in essence, what they're doing is, they're taking the price of their streetlight fixture and the installation, and they're amortizing that over fifteen years, so that's why you get a leak, you know, and they, and they do, undoubtedly, they make some profit on that, on that light. And so, um, if you want out after a year, you're going, there's a, a buyout, in essence.
So I'm, I am perfectly fine with whatever the board decides.
I feel the same way.
(laughing).
I, I.
I mean, we save a considerable amount by converting to LED, so.
If I remember correctly, we were assigned homework when we did this.
Yep.
We tried to go and see every site where a light was either gonna stay or go, and I can't for the life of me remember going to the church parking lot, so, in my opinion, I'd like to go back there at night. But the other thing is, it, for two reasons, I'd like to see just exactly how lit it is at night, but I'd like to see how many lights are around it as well.
I'm never up late enough, but yeah, I think you're, I think.
Well, for some reason I am, (laugh) I don't understand it either.
Um.
So, I, I could go either way here, I mean, it's, it's one light, we're trying to do the right thing with all of these lights, and I guess if the light were to stay, I would like to see it converted, um,
Yep.
to, to be like the rest of our town lights, so.
Can we push this two weeks?
Uh, you, you can push this as long as you want.
Wow.
I mean, they just.
We don't, we don't.
They, 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 obviously, we, it, we're just gonna continue with the status quo until you tell me what to do differently, so.
Bob, could I ask you to come up to the podium one more time, so I can ask you a question? So when you say that the church lights stay on, how late are they off, so that we can drive by there and get a good sense of what it looks like after you, after the church's lights are off?
In the winter, they're on from about five-thirty to nine-thirty, ten o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, in the summer, they're on from dark until about ten o'clock, nine-thirty, ten o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but they're not on the rest of the night.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask Bob a question?
Sure.
If somebody knew when they were going down there, could you turn them off?
Pardon me?
If some, if you knew when somebody was gonna go down and look, could you turn the church lights off? At eight o'clock at night, so somebody could see how much light there was?
I don't have time, it's.
Oh, all right.
Can't touch it.
Okay.
You just have to suck it up and stay.
I'm not going, I (laugh) it's not my choice.
I think it's a great suggestion.
It's a busy area, it's a busy.
Yeah, yes, yes. Um, so let's table it until the twenty-third, and, uh, we can, we can make it a re-informed and, uh, very informed decision on it. Drive it, go, drive, drive the long way.
I drive to work at that time of the morning.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, moving rapidly along, um, once upon a time, I had made a suggestion that we should have a check-in uh, with the chairs of all of the town boards, committees, and commissions, because it seems that every, good night, gentlemen, thanks for sticking it out. Um. Uh, it seems annually, when budget season comes up, there is enough confusion, and we also have a significant amount of turnover and new committees that don't have the seniority that, uh, certain committees once benefited from, both in terms of understanding the role of the chair, vice chair, secretary, how to run a meeting, motions, et cetera. Um, and that it might be beneficial to have a workshop to review what their charges are, how to run a meeting, how to schedule meetings with town office staff. schedule meetings with town office staff. I mean, there's just a lot of, a lot of parts and pieces that say, you know, calling a meeting the night before via email and then just showing up at the town office, and then demanding information of the staff day of isn't the best protocol, but we can't fault people for being new and not, not understanding the process. So I would love to hear the board's thoughts on how best to accomplish this. Do we wanna do an entire board? Do we wanna assign one or two board members? That, you know, just how to structure it.
I think it would be advantageous if we did it as a group, as a board meeting. That way, and I think it should be the new, the new committees. And I think it should be their chair, vice chair, and I think the next, and, and secretary, or whatever it is, you know, that they've got. I, I can't see the whole, the whole of each committee could attend. We'd have to probably go to the school, which would be good.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm not, that would, that would be great, but I think they would be able to see how a board meeting runs effectively, the way we run a board meeting. So that's just my personal opinion. I'd like to do it as a group or as a board in a board meeting.
Yep.
And meet with department heads or committee heads.
Yep.
And of course, anybody can come, but that would be the focus.
Yep.
And probably ought to be done sometime in the middle of August, because that way the boards hopefully have appointed in July their first month of the year. They've appointed their heads, so then you can get, and that would be another driving point to get them to appoint
Right.
heads, because the, the chair, vice chair, secretary
Right.
would be advised to attend this meeting.
Right. Yep, yep, yeah, that's an excellent suggestion. Yeah, I'm fully, I'm fully on...
What do you think?
That, that sounds good. So would it be, if, if the chair, vice chair, and secretary were the same from the previous year, would they be asked to come? Would it be just, it is a refresh for everyone?
I would, I would ask everybody to show up as a refresher.
Yep.
I mean, I would, I mean, if, for no other reason that the people that have done it for years can help us guide people on the best ways of how to think about organizing it and doing it.
It's just protocol, really, which, you know, if you're fortunate enough to serve on a committee with veteran members, you were indoctrinated into that process of annually appointing a chair, which we do, you know, we're bound to do that, but it's a healthy thing to do is to actively make that choice, and, and then how that then unfolds. But as I said, you know, also policies and procedures just regarding use of the town office and use of staff and those kinds of things, communication, all of that. So David, what more do you need from us in terms of getting this rolling?
Well, it may be, I think this is a good start if we, if everybody concurs that mid-August is a good goal, although I know people hate August meetings, but that's all right. We've got far enough in advance to, to get it scheduled and to work some sort of agenda up through. I wonder if it's ambitious to try to do it as part of a board meeting, because I'm just thinking about, we've got 20 committees, and it's not, they may not all show up, but you might get two or three from each committee, so you're gonna end up with 50 or 60 people.
Quite a lot of people, yeah.
And, and if, even if everybody talked for a minute, you're stuck, you know, you're at an hour, and you know, if you've got other business on your agenda, that may be a lot to accomplish versus sometimes if that's your sole focus.
Yeah.
That allows for a free flow of information and question gathering and asking.
Yeah.
And I liken it back to broadband committee. I gave a really quick and dirty overview of the board committee commission's roles and guidelines, which I think was, I think people helped, thought was helpful at that, but there were a lot of that stuff we skipped over that, you know, what's the role of the chair, you know, in terms of setting the agenda.
Yeah.
You know, I think we could develop a pretty good agenda.
And handouts, you know?
And, yeah, and be prepared, and I, I think it is good to do it immediately after they've been appoint, you know, everybody's been appointed or reappointed, and then give them a chance to elect their chair or their officers, and then say, oh, by the way, welcome, you've been hit with this. And let them, and let, I mean, obviously, we can let these people know, we can pick up the schedule that you all can make, hopefully.
David, you had a thought?
Well, he's answered some of it, but I've had two more while he was talking, so, you know, you're getting me in trouble tonight. Just food for thought, we could either have a separate meeting and have everybody hear all at once, or we could have to schedule it so that for the next, over the next month and a half, we have for, not a regular meeting, which wouldn't be everybody, but it would, you know, split them up and...
Well, the next thing about having everybody at once is they all hear the same message.
Yep.
And they may benefit from what we think they need to know, or you think they need to know, to what they ask. You know, a lot of times what comes forth as a question that, let's just say, the Board of Appeals asks, is also applicable to recreation. But the recreation doesn't know, doesn't know what to ask, or didn't dare ask, or something, you know, and there's, I think there's some benefit to everybody hearing
Same thing.
the same thing, and having the opportunity to feed off one another in terms of those questions.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think I've changed my mind. I think I'd rather not do this at a, at a board meeting. I think I'd rather have a regular meeting with everybody.
A, a separate workshop.
A separate workshop.
Yep.
Separate workshop.
You've changed my mind, David.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
And then we'll find out that that was not the way to do it.
Well, but...
Makes sense, so...
I think it's worth the effort, 'cause I just, I, boy, I can think of a few commissioning committee chairs that unfortunately have received sort some either tough love or, or some frustrations from the board, not because they really did anything wrong, they just didn't know, you know, and I would really wanna prevent that. You know, I feel remiss that we are not giving them the tools they need, so...
Well, and it's certainly, yeah, it's certainly better if everybody's pulling on the rope, so it's me.
Well, and at the very worst, this is 1.0, and we learn from it, and we know, you know, 2.0 will be better, right?
Yeah.
The other, the other thing that may be helpful, or not maybe, will be helpful, is for some, we need, you all may need to revisit their charge too. You know, the planning board, you don't have to, so, so, so much, but and broadband's new, so you might not have to, but there are some that are probably stale charges, for lack of a better word, and maybe we can, you know, maybe not that night, but people might say, hey, you know, we need some more direction. Can we have a workshop with you and schedule something to follow?
Yeah, create a list, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a good start.
All righty. If we're all in agreement, let's move along to agenda item number 16. It's high time we set a meeting with our friends across the water. Any date in particular I would highly caution against, 21st. Although it wouldn't be impossible, it would be tight. Jump off the ferry and drive straight into Camden, which, you know...
How, how about the 14th? Sooner the better.
I agree.
14th?
Tuesday.
Oh, man, the 15th is tabs day.
I should be good on that.
That's terrible. Uh, okay.
So 14th?
Yep.
I'll alert them to that.
All righty.
So that would be potentially like a 2:00 PM ferry, or?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
2:00 PM out, and what's that?
Five?
4:30 back, or something.
It's five-ish.
Whatever, yep. If there's anything that you all need in preparation for that meeting, let me know. By that point, we should be well on the road to the deck project being done. I've been keeping Janet filled in on the status of that in the float, and...
Did they get a copy of the climate resiliency study?
Not for me.
That might be a good thing for them to be in possession of.
Yep.
Do what they might with it.
Did you say the 3:00 o'clock ferry?
Uh, it's two...
I'll, I'll confirm with Janet when they have time.
But yeah, maybe...
They didn't, when I had the conversations with Janet, she said that this wasn't, it wasn't an issue that, at that point, that we don't need to be aware of. It was more of keeping the lines of communication open, knowing what's going on here, and...
I think we'd agree four times a year, minimum, or something like that.
Well, there was some discussion about having a mini-committee too, which...
Never, never.
Didn't quite get off the ground, but...
But it's great, it's great. Okay. Uh, number 17. We need to have a discussion about a special board meeting?
Yeah, we have a, an issue that requires some board attention and probably something that we may spend a fair amount of time behind closed doors having a conversation about, and so my suggestion is pick a day and time that you all can get together and...
Yeah, I would highly recommend that we not schedule this on the same regular board of, because of the time and attention needed. So could folks do a afternoon-ish, say, 4:00, 4:30?
Yeah, um, ideally Monday, March 30th?
Whatever else is going on the 30th, something that date sticks in my head.
I don't know, I'd put it in here, nothing on my calendar. I'd put, put it in here because it was a Monday night, and sometimes Monday nights seem to work for the bulk of you, but...
Yeah, you know, and if any, you know...
I guess I'm okay on that. I can't think of, don't have a duck meeting, don't have a meeting, there you have it.
Okay. When are you gone for?
28 through the 7th.
What about the 20th, the 24th, so the day after our next board selectment meeting on a Tuesday?
There's budget committee that night, but we're going next Monday.
Uh, we can't have it then.
A, a party that's gonna be present can't be present.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to that Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay, so Tuesday, the 24th.
And would, can folks do 4:00 or 4:30?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a better or worse time?
Should be able to. That's on the 24th?
Yes.
Should be able to.
Okay.
Which one, 4:00 or 4:30?
Which works better? Does it matter?
4:30 is, I, I'd definitely work a little bit early for 4:00, but 4:30 works.
Let's do 4:30 then.
4:30.
Yep. Okay. Great, thank you.
We won't go more than two hours, 'cause the budget committee starts at 6:30, and I'll need to be in there.
Yep, I can't imagine that.
No. Initial meeting, probably not.
Okay. Uh, we have the treasurer and payroll warrants to approve and sign?
I move that the board approve the treasurer's and payroll warrants.
Approved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing?
Do we have any special?
Nope.
Specials, okay.
No. All those in favor? Thank you very much. And now I need a motion to enter executive session for property tax abatement due to poverty and/or disability.
I move that the board of selectmen enter into executive session for purpose of discussing possible property tax abatements due to poverty and/or disability pursuant to Title I MRSA, Section 405.6F, and Title 36, Section 841.2E.
One second.
Approved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much.